So, let me follow on joke master today, toastmaster Vishal.
Good morning everyone. I can tell you this one specific word given to me when toastmaster one has said like joke master has to make you laugh and make you someone laugh. Right, in that last time, I am with the river joke laughing is on you, you laugh or not, let me try. So, once upon a time Einstein was going to an important science conference along with his driver. And his driver was a very look alike to the Einstein, so while on the way Einstein stole his driver. I am really sick of these conferences, I have to deliver the same thing again and again and again. Driver said, I absolutely agree. Because as a driver who have been attending all of your conferences going along with you, I know and I can mimic your mimic you on this stage and I can deliver the conference in place of you, I am that confident. Einstein said, that's a great idea, let's switch places and they were both looking alike, so it was easy. On the way, they changed their dresses so that a driver looked like Einstein and Einstein looked like driver. When they reached the conference, driver went on this stage to deliver the speech and Einstein acted like a driver sitting in the audience. There was a scientist who thought, who wanted to throw a very good impression on the audience and thought to ask a very difficult question to Einstein. So that he, so that they could not answer and he becomes the hero of the, of the conference. While driver was delivering the speech in front of the, uh, in place of the Einstein, then the scientist interrupted him and asked a difficult question. Everyone was silent, audience was taking the breath and waiting for the response. The driver said, looking, giving him a dead stare, looking in his eyes. Hello sir, this question is so easy that even my driver can reply because.
I thought it is Talo vers Malo Varazin, Poshadat.
Excellent, toastmaster Vishal. Now let's be follow on, the general evaluator is not there, sorry. So, as I was sharing with you that today my daughter was in great demand, she was hoping from one house to another house. So, I wanted to know especially from girls, how many of you have done the same thing in your childhood? Only, of course, we all have done and how many more boys tackle on with their sisters, or I do. So, in my childhood actually I used to tag along with my sister from one house to one, another house. For the prasad and the greater motivation used to be the gifts and money used to get afterward. So moment we used to get back to the home, we would count that money and plan for the future what toy we are going to buy from that money, yes. So I would request anyone of you to share any of such experience that you witnessed during the childhood.
Not about childhood but this morning itself, when we were calling the girls for puja, then there were so many boys as well taking along to them, so I know more than fifty, you know six in total. I sent my wife out, please take her, then she from the bathroom herself said, all boys out, girls in. Basically, that always doesn't come.
And now the kids have increased in our time. Okay, anyone else, any female member would like to share any of your experiences? Anyone?
It was basically of like, when you are a child, you get pocket money and all those. But at this type of the, it was like all, like we had a group of nine ten friends, we used to go to all the homes together and we used to count it, sit and count and get that this is the, is that earning? Like, like at that time, that fifty to hundred piece would also feel like something with big.
Yes, please.
Also, I have two other sisters, when we are both three sisters. And when I was something like eight, six or seven years old, so we went to the dad Nana for morning work and he was roaming here and there, we were playing. I didn't even knew that this is something like that, that was my first time going to somebody's house like for eating and, and virtually did like a baby. I didn't knew that it all existed. So somebody, somebody came to us and he said that, come to our house please, we are having this party. And all and we all, we all three very happily went there without even telling Nana, he was roaming around and we went there. After like an hour and we Nana came that, don't you have this much of brain, you can't even tell me? And after two minutes, he also seated and eating, eating. We had that money and, and after that we planned to have one pizza with that. And later on, later on, later on, I wake up at five AM so that I can go a little every house and collect as much money.
Why not over there, they are excited. For school, she will not wake up, for today she was ready by seven.
She was really hold to these houses because she was able to collect pizza from dad, money, collect.
So moving on, I would request our general evaluator for the day, Anurag.
So, I am, I am, I am. So today is, being part of general evaluator, I am going to evaluate the whole meeting. And I am looking at only aspects of meeting and I will present my report in the end. I am not doing this thing alone, I have a team of evaluators that are working with me. So for this, so so I will invite my toastmasters to see or grab me here to share our job objectives.
Hello everyone, good morning. Let me tell you a sentence and you guys tell me what's wrong in that. He were going to the bathroom where he was accidentally slipping, but still he running and came to toastmaster. What is wrong in this sentence?
Was slipping, running.
So many things. So this is my role today to monitor all of your speeches and I will be noting down any incomplete sentence, any wrong usage and I will also be promoting or encouraging you to use the word of, the way today is not actually written here, but it is jovial. Job, J O V I L. It means a person that has a very happy, smiling and funny kind of nature. For example, and word also. So please use this and at the end of the session, I will also recommend you guys a book. If you want to, if you can, from that book you can improve your motor after. So stay tuned guys and happy Navrathra.
Very well explained, I hope you all, only your doubts are capable of grabbing a profile. So now I would like to invite my, our second evaluator, our counter and toastmaster Sachin is playing this role.
Hi, good morning, toastmaster and dear guest. So, what is the purpose of our, the purpose of our counter is to note down those filler words which everyone tends to use in the speeches or video they are speaking here. So what are those words? Those words are like, uh, um, uh, but, so you know. So, I will be counting and noting down those observations and I will present that report at the end of the meeting. So who speaks, how many filler words? But why is it important to pay attention towards this kind of filler words? Because if you are using too many such a kind of filler words, it will make your speech ineffective. So, at same time, I would also like to share one routine, how this can be avoided. Yes, there are so many techniques, but one of the techniques can be, if you are taking some meaningful pauses, small pauses, this can, this will be avoided. Instead of taking a filler word, you can take a meaningful pause. And yes, of course you will be able to avoid. Another tip is, you need practice while you are delivering the speech. When you are practicing at home, record your speech and note down those filler words that you are using during your speech. That will help to reduce the number of, amount of your filler words. So that's it. And at the end, I would also like to share, if you, all the speakers that are saying like, all the role players, if you are making these filler words as minimum as possible, it will really make, make me jovial today. Thank you.
Really good to be explained. Now, everyone of us know how much of that time for us. And for this, we have an evaluator, toastmaster Rithik, who is going to measure your time.
This is the duty of toastmaster. I prepared, really, very carefully a jovial speech for being our counter. And I previewed Mr. Sachin a couple of times, but he still is going, no, I have prepared also, so I will be at the wrong. So I got a timer for today. They repeat, I mean, as such we have many sections to do, but right now in this meeting, we have two different sections. One is about the prepared speech, the second one is about the evaluators. For evaluators, the time, sorry, for the prepared speeches, the time would be five to seven minutes. And as soon as the five, the clock, these five minutes, I will show this color, green color. Sometimes I feel green has a different meaning, get started, right? This time it means get start, I mean you should be stopping soon, right? So after four minutes, I will be showing this one, then after five minutes, for a prepared speech, I will be showing the yellow one. And then after seven minutes, I will be showing the red one. And it doesn't mean that you have to stop right at the seven minute. You have more, thirty more seconds to close nicely, okay? And for evaluators, the time you will just move to three minutes, so again at two minutes, I will show the green one. At two and a half, I will show yellow and at three minutes, I will show this one. But essentially you know that you have three point thirty minutes to complete your evaluation, alright?
So now all of you have clarity about the different role player. And apart from them, we are, we are going to have three speeches today as well. And there are three different evaluator for the same. So they are also evaluating the speeches and will measure their report. Similarly, I am also going to evaluate or analyze the whole meeting in different aspects. And I am going to present my report in the end of this day. So now I would like to invite our toastmaster of the day on stage. Thank you, toastmaster Anurag. For playing your role in this, inviting all of the role players to explain their roles. Okay, next in this series, as a child I used to enjoy was going to Ram Nila. I hope all of you have done it, especially in North India. So, in Ram Nila, it was not a, not an individual or family affair. At that time, it used to be community affair. So almost everyone, kid, parents, grandparents, used to visit together to the Ram Nila spot. And my place in Mawana, near Meirat, it used to happen in a big ground known as Tasin Kamada. So it will be nicely decorated with bright colored lights and huge plants, decoration. And I along with my friends, my father and my grandmother, who was not able to sit for long, so for her, we used to carry a small, comfortable char pahin, you understand, char pahin.
Yes.
So, I along with my cousin, Kano Mein Chhotu Bhai, used to pick that char pahin from house to that, that old ground, but that used to be a fire. So similarly, in the Ram Nila, there were two types of Ram Nila, Ram Nila there. One was, it used to start twenty days before the Asherah. And it was directed by the actors, actor in the sense, the real actors playing different roles there. And half of the time, they will be dancing on Bollywood songs. And the real Ram Nila will start just seven days before the Asherah. When we will have huge white space and the Ramayana Bhay, Raman and Sagardji will be played out there. And it will have the interest from all members of the society, irrespective of age, religion. Everybody will be there in the Tasin Kamada, enjoying the Ram Nila. So some of the, some of the things I used to enjoy, of course as a kid, the warfare tactic between Anumani and Raksana ji or between Lord Ramayana and Ramayana, then I have, it's the equated to current day, current day warfare, who there was so precise and then target, probably the US missile will able to mess that better. Then Anumani taking different sizes according to the situation, somebody is getting bigger, very big, somebody sometimes is changing into a small role. Then Lord Ram doing some telepathy with some means like Alastha Moni and you know learning the warfare tactics, learning the shashtul, you know, he sitting in Lanka preparing for the war of Alastha Moni is there in the India, but the telepathy is happening between them. So here we have telephoned, printed direction out, so amazing stuff. Then entire army, Surii army ended up building the thirty-five kilometers long bridge, still, still existing. They are known as Samsegu and which is three point five kilometers wide as well. So that time, I was reading, it was, it was built by using floating stones and the wooden which can actually sing it to give us stable structure. So that kind of thing happening at that time, so very, very fascinating and enjoyable. So that was my experience with Ram Nila and Ramayana. Now I would request anyone of you to share your experience, your childhood experience or your latest experience with this, played into this test series even.
So during this Asherah, we used to make bowls and bowls, we using all this roofs. Then my, my mother used to get made as owner's sector or the roof is worn.
So I, I have your prize possession with me.
Yeah, that, that we used to get in market, but, but we used to make at home and we used to play that, okay?
So my kids were playing with this last thing.
And we used to make a.
My daughter was not allowing me to carry, but the lady will not complain.
And we used to make a ravan from paper and put some, kind of some grass or something and some crackers and used to burn it. But it used to burn it in a second, but used to burn. Get much, much excitement.
Yes, I remember one such experience, you were preparing this ravan and you will have all those bombs in ravan. And outside one shop, which was having wooden door, we actually blasted up and it went into flame and that door, wooden door on fire. After that, my friend's father, he took us to the task. And he was running with the bucket of water proof, doused that fire.
So I think yesterday was my first Ram Nila experience. I went to set the world to throw down this Ram Nila, I was very fascinated by these stage and the technology we were using. So on the background, the, when it was a water, the safety thing, the water was coming on the background, there were the extreme. Sometimes the cake was coming on the screen, so that was really good. And yeah, so I remember yesterday, the scene was about Bali and Suri fighting. So generally, Suri wins, Suri and Nama wins that battle, the last battle. But from the look of it was feeling like the battle, their fight was getting, it looked like this. So I thought this time it's going to change, Bali was kidding, for this, they did, so gave out and something, but yeah, they were not, it was an act. I really appreciate, they were, they are really good actors, they are, this must want players are really good actors.
Even the, very Ram Nila, the Ram Nila was being very cast on the TV, usually would feel, in that they are like, probably now this technology is advanced, they have mics and everything and lots of lighting, background decoration, everything. You can watch it.
So you narrate this story, Bali or Suri, I am reviewing this dialogue from the Ramayana ravans when supported by Lord Ramayana, Suri challenged Bali for the, for the war. So he was like, Bali, bhant kar, Suri tuje yudh ke liye lalkar rahe, Bali bhant kar. You see that episode?
Yeah, yeah, so when it comes out, it is.
And he's beaten by Bali and he is then of. So then it was an incident happened to tell them, my younger brothers, my father's name is Balad, Balad. So I hope they will use to call him Bali. So my brother was playing with his friend and he said, Bali bahar nahi karte, and my father played for me, he is sorry.
I think you all are mentioning that you got chance to see Ram Nila, actors were there and you were watching. When I was around twelve years old, in our property, Ram Nila used to happen. And one day, Mata Sidharod, who was playing the movie, was not there. So they requested me, so can you play that role? I was in dilemma whether I should do that or not. And that too was a very critical moment, I go to know about why the actual road player was not there on that day. That was the kid app, basically, Ravan had to kid, Mata Sidharod. So I got ready, I mean makeup, sari and everything. Then when Ravan came in front of me, I was pure a road guy and he was like big guy. And I was so terrified of his laughter, he came to worship in the, I jumped out of the stage.
Good old moments.
So just add extra that, in my village, they were different than Ram Nila, as you said. So, so one was very well prepared, was ready by training to perform and everything. The other one was funny, quite funny because thirteen, fourteen year old kids used to dress in saris and, and females. And in the real time, they, their parents, so you know, they are in the thick of, from the background. And we can hear this, this first moment, it was very funny. And you know, when they used to like, like, they are seeing to fight, so some of them used to, you know, start fighting them like actually. It was very funny, it's maybe like, I didn't think it was that, but I still remember those days.
And stage experience is also very unique because earlier I used to think, how they can even do such long dialogues, right? Then I got to know that when I was playing that role, there is a couple of persons who are sitting behind the curtain, they are playing the role and they are reading the lines that you have to speak. So firstly, I made a blender, it was the line of Ravan and then I spoke.
Let us have that support and, and arguments. Now moving on, we will move to prepared speeches section. So we have three speakers for today and we have respective evaluators for them. So I would request Siddharth, who is evaluator for Nikita, to share in place of her speech.
Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning.
Nikita is giving her first speech, I can call high speaker's place. And the purpose of this speech is to introduce herself in front of audience. And any pathway, have you selected a pathway? Not a mission, but usually before starting a speech, we always select a pathway. So, okay, I think as there will speech for common for every hallway, just introduce yourself. So I don't know your speech title, I mean, does it cover, is it?
Yes.
Speech title, what is the name of, I mean, speech title? You are. So time of, you know that time is four to six minute. So for this, Nikita.
This is the first speech, actually, she will be a speech, we will stand up and give a standing.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, hello toastmaster and dear guest.
Good morning.
Today I am lifting my first trophy and I, I pray it to be. I would like to share several things of my life, this childhood. As I grew up, I am a second, second child, that in my family, loving caring and spoiled by my grandmother. And as I grew up, got two years old, my grandmother noticed one thing, then I look like her, they are my mother. And named me Rasti. So this is the problem started and she thought that I am, I am her daughter, she claimed that I am her daughter, who passed at two months old. And named me Rasti. So this was the biggest worry of my mother because my official name would be Rasti. And I about to admit this, so my father, the thanks, the thanks to this tension and bought me for admission and named me Ankrit. So I was standing before her, that because. In my schooling was quite, my friend for, for the good name, but I more interested in a, in a typical of activities on Saturday. And yes, and in a strict standard, I have decided biology, biology will be my, my subject. And follow the same plan, then my teacher for it. And I, after my schooling, I, I applied for the medical intern, but couldn't complete. And then I go for the graduation and the fourth graduation. The five years of my journey, the graduation and the fourth graduation, I list one thing, two things in me. Then first is I make friend free and the second, I become part of any group. In two thousand fifteen, I came in Delhi and got my first job as EPG analyst. That, it was exciting because first time I have saw, I have saw the heartbeat of real people. Two years passed away like a human because as my colleague become friend and I loved my job. But I noticed, but I realized one thing, then this is not a workplace because EPG is a globally, it has scope, but in India, there is a more limited scope. So I bought myself the biggest program for the courses like Excel and the sales etc. In two thousand twenty, the COVID hit and we lost data of US plant as even more, it was, it was more vocal tone pandemic and only critically, half of it was entered. So I, so that was my turning point and I decided to execute my plan. I have taken two thousand seventy and I scored again my certain data sign. And but our office started and we had to join our, our office in five, fifth job. And I realized one thing more, then I don't like to fly logit. And then I have, that soon I got another job in a kaav dekho, at the, kaav dekho, at the data, at the. And so this was my journey, started from love on the biology and ended with IT professional for, the IT company for financial services. And I am happy and enjoying my, enjoying my Sunday morning in a class, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ankitah, for taking us through your growth journey from Rajni to Ankitah. Then from studying biology to being a data scientist, then to I T professional. Thank you so much. Uh, I forgot to introduce Ankitah before they start this speech, I have identified a mistake, my apologies. Ankitah is from Waliya, Madhya Pradesh. And as she said, and as she said, that she is working as a I T professional right now. And she loves, she loves listening to music, dancing and learning new things. Thank you. So now next in this race. I'm sorry, so there is a waiting for one minute to share feedback for postmaster Ankitah.
Uh, sorry, yeah. I was also busy giving the feedback. Yeah, all right, it's always good, sorry.
We moved from Madhya Pradesh to Rajasthan from Ankitah to Kedar. So Kedar is our next speaker and he is an I I T M. He is from I I T Khadaipur, he is a special master's from I I T Khadaipur. And he loved expressing himself in reading and he enjoys playing, playing better than. So I just want to come, Lokin. Before Lokin gives his speech, I request his, well, Gaurav to introduce.
Setting morning, we are past the right, right greatest speech today. Lokin Singh, yeah, studies overcoming obstacles, my plan to better communication. He has chosen this station mastery as his pathway, right now has this like biggest speech, so. Yeah, he go not going one project level and for the benefit of guests, there are twelve parts in postmasters, five levels and forty six projects. Time of peace note, the time is four to six minutes. And I request all of you once this speech ends, please give him a standing question. I would wish Pranav to give a question.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lokin and this is my icebreaker speech. I'm going to talk about my life and my journey towards improving communication and how it started and so much more. Let me ask you a question. When did you realize you need improve your communication? And you will, you realize already? When was the first time you realized that you need to do this?
Six months back.
I was not able to defend myself from my sister. I need to express myself. Yeah, so many of us realize the importance of communication early in our career or during our college. Yet it takes a lot of time to actually establish what exactly we want to improve and how go about it. This is exactly what happened with me as well. I was trying to understand what I need to improve and how to do it. I, in this journey, I overcame many challenges. Starting with understanding what to improve and grip, and the grappling with the fear of failure. And finally, the formidable fear of taking the first step. Yet, I overcame the challenges. So the first recollection of, uh, anything akin to communication that I recall from my childhood is when one of the person was selected as a school captain. I didn't know what communication is, but I think this is what I want to do. I want to lead, I want to communicate my ideas, but I didn't know how. But what do you expect from an eight year old boy born and brought up in a remote village of Rajasthan? What does he know about intricacies of the S A D? Of course, nothing. But fortunately for me, I got that opportunity when I admitted, I got an admission to Nawalai School in sixth class. Where they focused on all round development. So the focus was also on the communication skills and any stage brilliance. I got this first opportunity, but what did I do? I found excuses to not be there. While my peers and my seniors were on these days, participating in the competitions, debating, I would, I earned for the same. But excuses handed back, I didn't do anything. Life went by till tenth class, things were same. In tenth class, for some remark, even some remark, even thing happened, uh, boy who never even was in that, uh, top ten, uh, scored the highest marks. I was drowned in, in this newly found fame and I got even more opportunities to be on this stage. But then again, there was, I was gripped in with a new fear now, fear of failure. I had found success in some one thing, so I didn't want to fail another thing. So I did my duty to conquer that dream. This is how my school went by, for a year, I went to Bodha, uh, fulfill the I T degree and communication to Deepak Singh. But, but when I went to college, the first thing, the serious exercise was communication. That you have to part of a diverse society to succeed and to get a good and decent placement. But I was still struggling with the fear of failure set down. I never applied for a single interview, so of course I didn't get selected. But then a possibility came again in the second year, uh, somehow I somewhere in my career and went for some interviews and was selected for something department best. Which was nice experience, but I didn't contribute much. I didn't take, I discussed any of the events. So again, I didn't learn much. It was time for the incentives and placements, I needed to improve my communication again. But then I relied heavily on my technical skills and I somehow got a decent job. Uh, I went to G S Associates, uh, worked there for one year. I realized data is my strength, analytics is my strength, but then communication is also a very important part of the job. What did I do? Again, nothing. My peers, my colleagues, my boss was presenting my work to my superiors. I wanted to change that, but again, I didn't take any agency. At that time, I changed my job and I switched to a business where directly I'm working. But my habit of not taking any excellent agency, I didn't do anything. I was working with diverse colleagues, diverse backgrounds. I was terrified to talk to them, people from Mexico, Japan, Canada, how to talk to them. But to my head's surprise, some of them were worse than me in communication. So I was just doing my job well, but I had one more misfortune also. Till now, the boy who learned English alphabets in fourth class, always thought, saw, always about English. English is the communication, you know grammar, probably that's all, because I didn't know this. So my friend, my flight pick, when, uh, in the beginning of the pandemic, when you were, uh, struggling with morons like, this list is, uh, let's, let's, let's prepare for Gmail. That's when I realized that now that my grammar is improving a bit, it's not about, the communication is not about grammar, it's more than that. And that's why I started exploring ways to improve my communication. One of my friend introduced me to postmasters. And that's when I realized that this would be hell, this was in twenty twenty one. Yet it took eighteen months to join this group. But finally, when I'm here, I was constantly delaying my icebreaker speech because I was in a perfect situation. I wanted to deliver a perfect speech. At this point, I had a revelation. My first speech doesn't have to be the perfect one because I'm not a great speaker. But this is not about where I begin, this is where, this is about where I want to be. And I want to become a great speaker. This is why, after overcoming all the challenges, I stand in front of you, giving my icebreaker speech. And I couldn't be more excited to be here. Thank you.
Feedback. Yes, uh, there's a minute for the feedback. Okay, now, uh, from celebrating the share art, we'll, we'll go to Orta and celebrate Durga Seema. And Gordon, very happy to invite Postmaster Thamman for his speech. And his moderator is Postmaster Rahu, who requests Postmaster Rahu to share the details of his speech.
Postmaster Thamman will be giving this second speech, uh, for eleven one presentation mastery. In which the objective of this speech is writing a speech with purpose. And the title is Good Thing, Bad Thing and Who Knows? I wish all the best to Postmaster Thamman for his second speech.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me start with a story. Once there was a farmer who owned a horse and had a son. One day, the horse ran and the neighbor went very concerned. They came and asked the farmer that this is very bad. Now, how do you run the field? The farmer, he paused and replied, good thing, bad thing, who knows? Next day, the horse came back with another horse, it turned to the farmer. The neighbors were quite happy, they think, they said, look, your horse came back. You must be doing twice of your original work. Again, the farmer was indifferent, he said, good thing, bad thing, who knows? Few days later, his son fell off on the horse and broke his leg. The neighbor came in, they showed their ones, they said, now your son is handicapped, will not let me help. Again, the farmer said, good thing, bad thing, who knows? Soon in one group of the village, all the young men went ask to join the one. But this guy, the, the kid, he was escaped because of this treason. The neighbors were envious, they came, you're lucky. Again, the farmer said, good thing, bad thing, who knows? And the story continues. There is a lesson here, an instructive lesson. But before we jump here, let me give an example. Last week, I was about to prepare my daughter's speech and then I got a call from Rahu. He sounded very upset, apparently his girlfriend's parents were visiting the town. He had just kicked out of his, her house. He told me, this is very bad, bad thing. I was indifferent. My response was equal, I said, good thing, bad thing, who knows? But look at him, he was not destructive for that he can prepare very well and on the twentieth trophy. So we all feel this situation and we jumping to level the thing, I call it a mental model. A mental model is a notion, the way we think what is. But the problem is not the way you have a mental model, the problem is you don't recognize that you have a mental model. You think this is the way what is, but actually, this is your model that thinks this is the way what is. I have similar situation, few times, I presented well, I felt very good, I took some time to explain the key concept, my own presentation. And I, I was in town night, which of here. And then suddenly a pop-up came through my teens, my boss said, you spoke a lot. It hurt my knee. I went to read lot of books in that weekend. One of the books said, whatever you do, it comes from your value and you will be. Next day, all prepared, during my one-on-one, I told my boss, you can pay back, but you know, it is not my mistake, it is my value and belief. And I thought, learning inside you, like time is in the muscle. My boss did a pause, she said, they need to change your value with you. And here I am, in your obvious company, learn about your value today and choose the one. We can, we can, we can pay my future, uh, speak at the. But the thing is, this is not a fixed concept, your model, mental model, uh, you can change, it is not casting stone. Suppose, I'll, I'll give you one example, a scenario, suppose you are driving a car. You have very important average and you are late. You are stuck in a traffic jam, it's not a regular trade-off field traffic jam. Just real you, just point there and your car, AC suddenly blows down. And on top of that, suddenly, it check, it's crossed your car and almost causes an accident. You must be very angry and I'm very sure, loving time is, it was not in your expectation. But let me share one example. Few minutes back, the car crossed you, the driver caught it, failed that news over and over. His son has made an accident and he didn't know that, whether he will be able to see his, his son. Now, do you think we will still hold the same expectation, same feeling from your age and then we go ahead? Look. You are thinking what situation I'll become, but that's one important question. Actually, it doesn't matter, what matters is what you should are doing, you allow yourself to modify. That's what matters. Actually, you are describing, you are thinking in your mind, you are describing the area that food is. You have to be described, area, pretty good, right? So when you realize this fact that suffering begins, the moment you started living, you start living anything. The moment you jump to foundation, that the moment suffering starts. So you need to really take a pause and take the decision appropriately, which emotional domain. and take the decision appropriately, which emotional domain, which mental model you want to take. To answer that, what I will say, in fact, I will give to all of you that this Shubham Mahasal, that choose your reality very carefully. Choose only the one which serves you better and make it jovial. Thank you.
Now, from enjoying the Ram Bhida, we might as well reach to enjoy the Tasharah. Just an excitement start spreading from the morning only when the Ramgarh Pundaran Dehna, they are being dressed up. So from morning only, I would start visiting that Nasi Kamaadhan just to witness the Ram is being prepared and I will be there tonight to enjoy the blast. And we be the only town around, many villages from nearby villages. At that time, you hardly any class to enter. So they will come on Thangda, Dukhnaad, the fellow god, the entire ground will start surrounding by ghost cards and animals. And as soon as the comet is spreading, we will start gathering along with our again, friends, family, holiwalas. And the favorite dish at that time, at the meal, could be jalebi. Everybody will be vying for jalebi and having it. So jalebi, gurkha, and all the local stuff will be there. So, one of the incident I tell you and that dying aims now Raman, what happened when the Raman was being fired up. One of the bomb fell down. It was not blasted. And that person took that, that boy at that time, he was of our age, took that bomb or took that away, bomb milgiya, bomb milgiya, suddenly, it burst. So his entire hand, it was all black and black bread was to go up to bomb. So, we took him to hospital and since that day is known as Raman in our own country. So, anyone of you can share any such experience?
I have many, but the critical one is that on the eve of Diwali, you go to your rooftop and then light the candles and diyas, right? So I was very much interested in the bomb part, not the diyas and candles. But my father said, go away and then light them up. I had the bombs in my one hand, the bisli bomb, the other one used to have, and the candles on the other side, right? So I was trying, trying to plant a candle, but by mistake blasted the bombs. So I had similar experience, but the hand was same.
You have also.
But I was alone, so I did not get any name as well.
Anyone?
I can share one. So in character, we don't have Ramguru. We have a few. But it's like the last day of Durga Puja, we will report to Masha, right? Of the idea. And it was a very, a position physically, sarcastically, we all gathered. And I used to dance a lot, right? Like in the formation. And my parents used to get a lot of calls, saying that your son is dancing so weirdly. And one dance was become like, it was during, when I was in, early days in my school, right? So, my weird dance was called spider dance, because it's like dance with those kind of steps. So, I am afraid actually want to do, we visit for voice sometimes that we are here to see your spider dance, why not we dance? That's why it's called the Ram Gita.
Can you talk spider dance? We will see.
I did it myself, after watching, and you got this thing of spider and book in you. And that's another great thing. But other thing I recall basically, after the Masha, the Riaf, the Tathugun, but you say in the beginning, you must be going to visit different places, different houses. We do this thing after Tasharah, we call Super Vijaya. And then we visit our native place and get lot of FCS. That's the way we remember, right? And we were, they treated us with the best FCS. We used to visit their place first, right?
Okay, with this, we will move to next section, which is assessment and evaluation. So I hope who had are very jovial and fun reading today. So I would request our general evaluator, Toastmaster Rahul, take it over. What a wonderful guest. I hope you will have enjoyed this. So, since we have an MC session today, because of that, we are not conducting table-to-table session. And therefore, we have started our evaluation part. And for this, now, I would like to invite our first evaluator, Toastmaster Siddhar, who is going to share his evaluation for Toastmaster Ankitam.
So, good morning. I think during COVID, we used to hear one line from our medium, apdamaaya pershuti. I think only the target speaker learned this, heard this. And that's why she changed her job and learned a new thing. Data and art. When the speaker was giving his speech, I was a little bit confused. What was more diverse, whether it was her station or her career? Whenever she was getting chance, she switched. Whether it was job, whether it was education or something learning things. With this, my target speaker, Toastmaster Ankitam completed her first speech, first speech, and that is icebreaker, icebreaker speech. With the, she gave a beautiful message with her personal story. And the message is don't be in comfort zone. Whenever it is time to change your job, your skill, just change it. Otherwise, you mainly mistake life, she said. When there was COVID, she got, actually company got, the US client was lost, they lost company, company lost. Then she learned a new skill and that's why she called me. So that's why we should learn this thing that we should avoid, we should avoid our comfort zone. The speech was perfect. As she was giving her first speech, so in comparison with first speech, she was awesome, since she was confident, eye contact was good. And she was continuously smiling. So as every speech has a scope of improvement, so she also has a scope of improvement like, she could have been added one title, beautiful title that can matches with speech objective or speech. Yeah, the content. Second thing, do not try not to repeat something which is already mentioned. You are giving your first speech, this is a difficult speech, so just avoid this line. Instead of that, you can currently, speaker can start speech directly. And third thing, try to use a little bit stage movement that make better, that can make your speech better. With this, a couple of points that I mentioned, just stage movement and try not to repeat the same lines. You can add these all things and use each next speech we will do with this. And run this speech.
Really well explained. And with this, I would like to invite our next evaluator, who is going to be a straight winner in evaluation. Today is also going to give a honor in.
I hope also you know three quotes. He has said one quote. And I think that translates what today's key message from the, from our Toastmaster was. So he, and he says what I quote, when everything seems to be going against you. Remember, when everything seems to be going against you, remember that the airplane takes off against the wind, not today. And I think that's the most impressive key message which we learned today from Toastmasters to Kailas speech. He talked about the competition where his cousin went. We learned from him that communication is the most important thing. He talked about his Navrata school, where he thought that communication as well as stage presence was taught very well. But to his mind, he was always giving excuses. So I think the story he built around from his childhood till today, it was very captivating. Three things which I would really like to give, like the grounding points which really stood out for me. One, he came on the stage and asked a question. Fear of failure. He talked about fear of taking the first step. That was really, I think for people who are starting for the first time, starting with question is one of the best thing you can do. Second, he was very open to talk about his failures. If you can go back, he was talking about excuses, fear of failures, self-doubt, the quota experience he talked about, and habit of not taking action. And the third thing which again was amazed was his confidence. I was sitting there back, I could not believe that it was his first speech. So the authority with which he spoke in the icebreaker speech, was momentary, okay? The objective, introduce and share motivation behind joining Toastmasters. I think you achieved that. But as every speech has its own positive and negative, I have one point for your constructive criticism of Toastmaster Kailas, which was, when you came on the stage and during your five to six periods, you were standing at one place. You tried moving here, but again, I don't know, because it was your first speech. So, that's the only feedback I have for you is, make the full coverage of the the stage so that you can match the eye contact each one of the people. And the whole room is that it is inclusion. So you can use a double approach. That's, that is very common in the Toastmasters, you can cover the stage along with that. So I believe, in conclusion, if Lokain can walk on the stage presence with his ongoing authority, open to talk about his failures and asking questions. I believe we are going to see many incredible speech from Toastmasters today in the coming future. Thank you.
Really well explained, totally every aspect. With this, I would like to invite our next evaluator, Toastmaster Rahul. Who is going to evaluate, going to share these reports for Toastmasters.
Good thing, bad thing, who knows? What an intriguing title by Toastmaster Tanvek. When you are choosing an interesting and intriguing title, it automatically creates curiosity among the audience. And full marks for that, the audience is already willing to listen to you when you are choosing a great title. So the title was perfect. Toastmaster Tanvek has a very different way, very unique way to share the story, to tell the story. I mean, you just want to listen this story. And he included a lot of stories in this speech. And the way he goes say, good thing, bad thing, who knows? Obviously, I am not able to communicate, it's a unique quality he has. He has a great voice quality and the vocal variety that he used throughout his stories really impressed the audience. He also included humor in the speech. And when you are including humor, you already connect with the audience and they are very much into your speech. And you brought up the instance of loyalty and that is where like everybody goes. How? Something humorous was there. Well, the complete speech was really great. However, there are two recommendations that I would like to share. The first one, even though the hand gesture, body language was really good, but I could see the stage movement was linked, you were moving maybe here to here mostly. And you were constantly moving. So this kind of disconnects the audience at the same time. They are not able to concentrate actually. So what you can do is that, you can follow the W approach that Toastmaster correlation. You can choose one point, share one pattern, move to another point, then share one pattern. Similarly, you can use the stage. And then the second recommendation is that you have included a lot of examples. Sometimes, actually, this, this speech is not able to give a clear, clear message, clear purpose, like what exactly you are trying to achieve. So try to include one story or act like two stories and create this speech around that. So that it is everything connected and we get to get a message from this speech. So to summarize, a great title, great humor and great way of storytelling, just add few samples and thought a little bit on the stage presence. It will be a great speaker for you more and we are either to learn and hear more from you in coming weeks. So that will be important.
Very well, very well explained by Toastmaster Rahul. With this, now it's time for us to invite our hostess ladies, who is going to share their reports. For this, first I would like to invite our domainian, Toastmaster Kusit.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So the good words used in the meeting were precise, fascinated, terrified, rectified, immersive, someone, monotonous like, captivating. And some bad uses. Mostly, I noticed were people were using AN or DA very frequently or in a very bad way, some of them were. That used to be a fun. So I don't think I should be required that that used to be fun. That good, that can sink in, that, sorry, that good and that can sink in, it should be the good that can sink in. I remember one such an experience. If you are using an experience that, then you do not need to use one also. I remember such an experience as a number. It looked real, it looked real. If you are talking about past, so you should not use, it looked real, it looked real. Before start any speech, before starting any speech, this is the problem started, this is where the problem started. As I standing, as I am standing. Again, in a sixth standard, in sixth standard. Then I go for the graduation, then I went for the graduation. I have saw the hurting, I have seen the hurting. I got the another job, that is not required, I got another job. And again, how, now how do you work in the field? If you are using past tense, then you should use, how will you work in the field? That's why we are started, that's why we have started. And somewhere I see the scope of improvement, tenth standard can be used instead of tenth class. How I talk to them, how I approach them. Large angle will go away, large angle will vanish away. Avoid these lines, you can use all these lines. And the most I was referring is, can anyone guess? Word power maybe. You can refer to this, this is an amazing book, I am also very keen reading this. It might looks like a time save question for this, but you can refer.
Thank you for letting, uh, good interviewers. Now it's time for our part of, who is going to share his evaluation.
Indeed, today's routine might be improving because there were minimum usage of filler words. And special mention to Toastmaster Gaurav, Toastmaster Rahul and chair on the top, Toastmaster Varun. He had a long road to play here and he went, he took the winning for the horses. At the same time, yes, I would also like to present a record for each and every one of us who came here and spoke. First, Ritu has used three years of, then Kritika, one arm. Vishal, TM Vishal, couple of arms, then TM Anurag, one arm. TM Kushi, one, TM Sachin, three arms. TM Ritu, one arm. TM Siddharth, couple of arms and couple of so. TM Ankita, being the icebreaker speech, couple of arms and couple of so, can be considered as a icebreaker speech. Rukendran, couple of so. And here I would also like to mention, like when it comes to icebreaker speech, yes, we need to have a chronology of the events when you are explaining about yourself. How did it happen from your childhood to the, when you are at the performance stage and there could be some words which can replace this so then now. And one tip for this is if you could break your speech into the firstly, secondly, thirdly, instead of using this so now and then words. So that could be really helpful or you can again find out some earlier, latter, this kind of words. So this so, the rapidity of use of so now then can be replaced. Then it comes to Tanmay, again, no filler use, but there is a repetition of good thing that things close. That take nearly three to four times, so that is what I wanted to mention and that's it from my side.
This, it's time to invite our last evaluator, timer.
It is Ritu. There is no timer right now, I can take as much time as possible, right? Okay, so there are two gentle sayings, enjoy every moment and make every moment count. So both of these were no problem, I enjoyed each and every moment of the performance on the stage, but at the same time, I was counting the moments. So for speaker Ankita, for prepared speeches, she took three minutes twenty-five seconds. Um, her evaluator Siddharth took three minutes ninety seconds. And actually for evaluators of all the prepared speeches, I think there is a good synergy, they took almost the same time. For speaker Rukendran, for his icebreaker speech, he took six minutes forty seconds and his evaluator Gaurav took three minutes eight seconds. Speaker Tanmay took seven minutes twenty-eight seconds and his evaluator Rahul took three minutes six seconds. Kushi took two minutes fifty seconds and Sachin, two minutes thirty seconds. And I think I need to bless the speakers. Thank you.
With this, it's time for each and every evaluator. So now, I am going to start my evaluation, but I have an advice so far. So, meeting was started on time, for those to president, Toastmaster Kritika and Pithris. Uh, also general evaluator was late. We should ensure that come on time. Now, during the meeting, I noticed that Hindi is used, since this is an English speaking club, so we have translated in a English. One more thing that I noticed is position of timer, I think he should have to sit on this side. And I noticed like during speeches, people like their focus is on this side and they forgot to see when he was showing the green card and yellow card. So now, come to the evaluators, Toastmaster Siddharth. He did a good evaluation from his end, but I noticed that he only gave commendation and recommendation, in the end, commendation was missing. So in evaluation, we usually prefer CRC approach. This could be improved, also there are two, three recommendations for him, when he was giving his evaluation, his focus is more on the speaker only. But the evaluation is for everyone, he can move here and also focus on this audience, so this could be improved, one more thing. Uh, for personally for him, I noticed that when he was here standing as evaluator, he asked him to audience, am I speaking right? Am I speaking wrong, is this correct? So this thing that I noticed when you are on stage, you are the speaker, you have to share things. And if you are confirming, am I speaking right and wrong, so this could be improved from his side. Next, for Toastmaster Gaurav. He toward every aspect, CRC approaches followed, also detailed report is given from his end. And it's hard for me to find any close since like, he shared something, he also covered different minor aspects. And also he gave only one feedback, that's saying it's a, I speak a thing, I think, so that's right. Now come to the Toastmaster Rahul, he also followed the CRC approach. One thing that I noticed, he used R and so too much time during the speech, during evaluation speech, it could be ignored. Now go to grammarian, one thing that I noticed that see mainly the number of time, word of the day was used. So this is from grammarian side, R, doctor and timer was good. So this is, this is report from my end, from general evaluator. Now I hand over the stage to our president. She is going to explain you about MC and what is going, what you are going to witness in next twenty minutes. Over to Toastmasters.
So it's time for the celebration moment. And we have two young members of our club, Toastmaster Dia and Toastmaster Kabir. Who will be the master of ceremony for the next half an hour session of games and fun. With a huge round of applause and lots of energy, let's welcome. Hi everyone, Happy Raghri. So after all these speeches, sorry, switch. So we will start some games and first we will play Dabsharas. And in that, you will have to divide into two teams, team A and team B. I will pick a person and they will act a movie and they will, uh, BP from BP, they will play, guess the movie, okay? Please divide yourself into BP and BP. Okay. You are good.
Start popping from there.
Okay. Eleven, eleven, it's divided, both the teams have eleven members. So coming to the instructions, ninety seconds will be given to you to act. Ninety seconds to act and guess and the movies are very easy, so don't worry. And it's all Bollywood and this is latest, this is old, just in case you don't know, I'll let you know. And this time you don't need to communicate, but yeah, speak through actions are the best. Who wants to go first? Yeah.
Kushi.
Gaurav, please, can you go?
What's the points difference?
One hour challenge.
Points difference, if they can't tell us, then it will pass to us.
It passed to the other.
No, then we'll move to the next.
No, no.
Two points if they answer, if they can't answer, we get, we get the points.
I have to start?
Yeah.
No, 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 now start. I got the. Okay, what's the limit, sorry, I missed it.
Nine, nine.
Nine.
Four, 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 four.
They are four words, four words, four words.
Same, four. We made it, very good, very good.
Actor.
Actor, actor. I need to show you. Abhi, ghar, ghar, ghar.
Kabur, kabur. Adapte, kibadat.
Rama, sir.
And four words.
Four, four, four.
First point.
The last word. The last word, Ramasa.
Sound like.
Diwani, diwani. Diva. Hello. Diva is the last word, diva is the last word. Rockstar.
Divani, divani. What we said, you don't.
We got one point.
Okay, no one gets a point. Thanks, I would like to call somebody from the team. Anyone?
Okay, you're going to take that way. Your time is up. Right? Just like that.
Kitali words.
New words.
New word, new word.
New word, move forward.
New, new. Before, after.
Sharman.
Shabba.
Albiya, albiya.
Dina, dina. Karim, karim. Shai, shai. But I will tell you, karim, karim. Karjish. First word. Karjish.
Second. First word.
Smoke. Drink.
Yeah.
Drink. Drink.
King. King, okay.
Drink. 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 Enough. Drink. Drink. Ah, ah, ah. No, let's see. Ah, bolo. Ninety second, okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. Movie, movie ka second part hai, second. Dil laggi. Ah, second. Second part, third one. Aarazon saal pehle. Kettin, kettin. Kisa pahja. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Oh, yeah, time up. Time over.
Bali, Bali.
Bali. Bali. Yeh ki hai, Murphy. Kya tha Bali? Bali aur Bali. Bali, kya tha Bali? Bali aur Bali. Bali aur Bali. Yeh brah, brah. Yeh baki. Now, that's all. So easy. Time stop. Yeah. Movie school food. I'm gonna say. I mean, I have to watch it tomorrow. Yeah, you are. I never.
No, I won't. They is very, very.
That's okay. Time, time start ho chaya, time sir. Time, time, I stand now. Actor. Listen, listen. Good. Good. Aaj, aaj, aaj. Ora, aaj. Elephant, elephant. Rahul, Rahul. What is watching? What is watching? Apne chanaa. Aaungi, aagi. Aayi, bol saari movie. Uma. Pan.
Pan. Gold.
Ice cream. Ice cream. Na, na. Na, na. Bhoti. Pan. Aage, aage. Kya bhoti chut. Chane. Kya na, kya na. Muthi, muthi. Muthi. Uma. Aage, aage. Ladoo. Kya na, kya na. Shanti, shanti. Ladoo second word. Pare, lege, bhati, pare. Ladoo second word. Shanti, shanti. Shanti, 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 shanti. Twenty seconds remaining. I'm playing, I'm playing. Muthi, muthi. Muthi, muthi. Ek baar aise. Muthi, muthi. Aaja, mere paas aja. Muthi. Muthi, muthi. Achae. Muthi. Time up. Do second, date a, do second. Okay.
Last, last. Yeah, in a bunch, in a bunch. Okay. First. Last.
What that layer, or a simple word it up there.
Timer, timer. Whenever she says, I'm ready. You ready? Yeah, okay. Seven second to hold. Starting, starting. One, one. Yeah. All, 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 all. Media. Chating, chanting. Media actor. Actors. First, first, actor. Actor. After. After. Old movie, new movie. Movie, new.
Six letters.
One, one, one.
Six letters.
Kanchakka. First word. Hero, hero. Kanchakka. Tama. Actor, actor. 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 Actor.
First letter.
Ah, yeah.
Here, here. Experted voice.
Actor, actor.
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 You follow the team. Show some, show some for both.
Sonka, sonka.
Six letter.
You can leave the ABCD.
You know.
You know.
Next, number, number.
Hero.
Actor.
Actor.
Oh, yeah. Time, time, time.
Unsega peyse to meri upda. Main bhoti so.
Khaber, khaber.
Khaber. Kya to batai? So, ta, movie, ta, ta. Don't see that, don't see that.
Sir, please, please.
Him ke saath to, you can see. Time, time, what is the movie?
I don't know.
You.
How many words?
Three. Badan, badan.
I like, I like. Goa.
Get your.
Rock.
Number one.
Rock. Team winner.
Now from the.
Now, now, now. You jump on. Time out, time out.
I haven't seen this.
It's been three minutes.
Koi time out nahi hai. No time.
You need to do your job as well, four hours.
I said, I said.
Time starts, time starts now.
Time, so, yeah.
How many words?
Do, yeah. Dukkta, chutni. Wow, Dukkta, Namra, Namra.
Kamra, Kamra.
Kamra.
Festival, something, festival.
Aar, aar.
Black, black. Black.
Red.
Kala, kala.
Kala.
Kalapani, kalap.
Kalap, kalap.
Movie ki baat holi hai abhi.
Kalap.
Kalap. How many? How many? This is the.
Balik, fani.
Black, white, white, healthy, beauty.
Kalap.
Kalap.
Black, black.
Kalap, rang, kalap.
Kalap.
Rang, rang, rang.
Rang, rang, rang.
Janthi, pasanti. Now we have two left.
Go.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Team.
Hi, my name is Murphy. Sorry, it's Murphy. It's Murphy, okay, I'm very. Okay, you get, sorry. This looks Murphy. Are you? Yeah, you should. No. Okay.
Ziggy.
I don't know.
You have to.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Actor.
Start the time. Start, start. Time starts. How many? Ah, yeah. How many? How, how many?
Javan for us.
Actor. Ah, dependant. Achu, Murphy, Murphy, Murphy.
Murphy.
Chandu, you see.
Murphy, Murphy. Murphy.
Okay, yeah.
This is. This is.
Winner, winner.
Murphy, Murphy. That's the. Unsega.
Check. Expert. Murphy.
We'll take the marks.
Marks to be told. Forty two, velo.
Okay.
How many marks? Time line.
This is.
One, two, three. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Over.
Second, first, second.
Second.
Second, what is it? First, what is it? Time, time.
Bollywood movie, Bollywood movie.
Name, yeah.
First.
Flight.
Plane.
Banoon.
Banoon.
Chandra, ya.
Ya, ya, mission.
Mission, Mangal.
Mangal, bull.
Mission, Mangal.
Thank you. Me to.
How many team, maybe?
Time, right?
Time, yeah, you winner.
Ah.
Hey, time, time, time. It's okay, my. Oh, poor.
Okay, next, we have the mimicry challenge. I am requesting, please do not take this long and firstly. And I would like to call anyone.
Rahul, 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 Rahul.
They can, just like this. Part is.
Sorry.
Just like this.
Okay, so you need to, there are nails in this shirt. And this ka bhi naam ho gaya, you need to mimic that first and another will guess.
So, the person is a celebrity?
No, no.
Rahul, you are very easy to judge. We don't have to do anything.
Not to my.
Durad, durad. You.
Okay. But it's. See, we are.
This is.
The race, starting now.
Any of you guess, it's color.
Yeah.
Yeah. Time, time, time. Can I start now?
Yes. Restart.
Mail, mail, ninety seconds. But. Oh, oh, oh. Much.
Ready. Actor, actor.
And because, so, so, so.
Ah, okay.
Should I say?
You can start now.
You can speak now.
How, how many cases will be there?
I don't know.
You can say. Much it's. Let me start, guys. So today, I have to. Much, much. Today, Rahul. Kushi.
Very nice.
Thank you.
And this is.
Okay, next.
Kushi, jao. Kya naam hai?
Akar, akar. Chukka dekhiye. What is he wearing?
What?
What is he wearing?
He have a unique hairstyle.
Ankit.
Ankit.
So, first of all, thanks for sharing, appreciate in my head. I am the most energetic guy in MCTC. Deepa Choo. Any guests? Ah, Turov, yes.
I think he's a guest now.
Not even a guest. Maybe. I'm not a very busy person. Maybe they can ask.
Mimic. Okay, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi.
Ah. Thank.
Please, not. Who is?
I'm meeting here. Kaise, main, konsa bahna bano, mujhe meeting nahi mat. A durad. Kedurak ki football naista kar rahe. Kuch nahi, aaj, main, aisi gaya. Mujhe award nahi mat.
Suraj.
Deepa Choo.
Deepa Choo. I swear, I don't like.
You should all listen to me. I am the soul of this club.
Kritika. Nine seconds.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
I'm there.
Rahul. Hey, naam hai.
Khan mein.
Koi naam hai. To saamne baidi hai.
Are you? This is, this is.
Ya, ja, anchor. Anchor to ho sakthe hai.
People know everybody. Waiting ten seconds.
And your time starts now.
I would like to share a joke. And.
We start.
Who is the?
I don't know.
I don't know. Asa, bhi.
Una, pota, la.
So, guys, aap sabko main Durga Baar hai, uske liye invite karta hu. I want you to, or I want you to join.
Alman.
Yeah.
I delete the. I have no edit, many, many edit points. Oh, what school is wait here?
I don't say.
I like having one in a while.
Okay, this is the last one, I don't have.
Look at him. So, feetpad is the backpass for the champions. I'll tell you story.
Sindar.
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 Pakun sir. Pakun sir.
Aage, put lo ke.
Aap. Sindar. I'm getting the.
Let me tell you a story. There was a monk, Andervatiki. Varun. Varun.
Kanes.
Yes. He's come after long time, so people don't.
After. Okay, so thank you so much, Adibar. I thank you. We have the last game. Last game, time here. Yeah. Solid. Karlo, karana.
Thirty.
She kept.
Thirty. I would go in first. Drink. China, Chinese.
Yes, na, na, na. So basically, I give you each one of you one man cup. And aapko, you need to keep the cup on your head. And you need to, you know, drop the cup of your opponent or anyone else without dropping your cup.
Hand ban karna toh, bhai, rakhon.
Candy, gate, candy.
You can do whatever. Apna cup nahi girana. Apna cup nahi girana.
With hands, I mean.
Hands, na, gate, mat. Cup ko kaise keep karoge?
Kaise girana?
Cup ko pakarke nahi rakhna. Pakarke nahi rakhna.
Kaise?
Demo, demo, please.
Demo. Aap, ya. Now. Okay, me a, a. Rakhon. Oh, please.
Okay.
Brother, yes, simply.
Then.
Beshri, uske ka cup girana hai.
Yeh toh koi espe, bura, like, acting.
But.
Easy as.
My espe, nikala.
Jaise mera paili girana, aapka apna paili nahi girana, girne dena hai.
Mere, saafon ka baana kara. Isko thora sa change karna padega. Isko thora change karna padega. Somebody. Ye board yaar, wala mat karna.
You board se.
Balik baad le.
Do, 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 can manage.
Nahi, kaap. So let's, everyone stand up and move the chairs.
One, two.